Okay, so we're good to go. Thank you, Burley. So, um, we're going to start the meeting. And so on the agenda, the first item is to call the meeting to order. And welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here. And we'll take roll. It looks like trustee Wake and
Trustee Newbold.
And Newbold and trustee Dupree are all not here. And so now we come on to number two, which is the pledge of allegiance. And if we can all stand and say the pledge of allegiance, and we'll all start it together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And item number three is to review and approve the agenda. And just to make sure that everyone knows that there was an agenda and then an addendum to the agenda, which contains two items that we'll be acting on as well tonight. And so does everyone have any requests to revise the order in which we handle the items on the agenda? We try to not do that because people have gotten notices to the order as well as the items. But if it's a true emergency, we can. Okay, seeing none, then we'll continue with the agenda as it has been printed. So item number four is public comment and correspondence on non-agenda items. This means that if there's something that a member of the public wants to bring to the attention of all of the trustees and the superintendent and all of us here in this meeting on an item we're not going to be talking about tonight, it's an opportunity for you to tell us that there's something you'd like us to think about. Since we have to comply with the Open Meeting Act, we won't talk about it today because it has to be noticed up to the public before we as trustees can talk about it and perhaps act upon it. But we encourage anyone who has anything that you'd like to tell us on non-agenda items to come to the podium. And we ask you to state your name. And if it's an unusual spelling of your name, spell your name. And then if you represent an organization, identify the organization. Otherwise, if you're going to talk on an agenda item, we'll be hearing from you shortly. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Then we're on to number five, which is pretty exciting. It's student achievement. And so I don't know if superintendent Thane is going to start the introductions, but we're excited to have the Verizon Innovative Learning App Challenge state winners.
Well, thank you. I see the board's been erased. But we did have the Verizon App Challenge text number up so that members of the public, as well as MCPS employees, could text in their votes for the Sentinel Verizon App Challenge team. We're pleased tonight to have with us Dan Landy, who is the teacher in the computer science department at Sentinel High School, as well as the students who participated in the app challenge. And they're going to tell us a little bit about their state-winning app presentation and talk maybe just a little bit in general about the program that they have at Sentinel High School. So with that, I'd like to introduce Dan Landy.
Yep. Hi, I'm Dan Landy. I'll first talk a little bit about our computer science program at Sentinel. I'll keep it brief. But we currently offer five courses in computer science. Four of them year-long courses, one of them a semester course. All of our courses at Sentinel are offered as dual credit with Missoula College. So students can earn dual credit, college credit, for their participation in those classes. I have 20, I think it's 27 students that are working on earning college credit this year at Sentinel High School in computer science. So very exciting program. So I had students in two of my courses. My computer science principles course, which I have two sections. That's kind of the first course students take. And then my students in computer science A, which is the class that these guys came out of, which is the second course they've taken in computer science. I had all, students in all of those courses submit app ideas for the app challenge. So we had seven app ideas submitted. So students had to write a proposal about what their app idea was and discuss things about why that's unique in the market and describe the app. And then they had to shoot a two-minute video explaining their app. These guys had the most entertaining video, is what I've been told. People really enjoyed it. So I think that was a big part of their, their win. So teams from all over the state of Montana submitted. And then it's judged by Verizon. And they pick the top high school app idea and the top middle school app idea. So these guys were chosen for the top high school app. They proceeded on to be able to qualify for best in region and best in nation and then also fan favorite voting, which is what superintendent Thane was speaking of on the board. So they received around 700 votes for the fan favorite, which was a pretty good turnout. They did not end up winning that. A team from Brooklyn did, which of course, they have a lot bigger pool of voters than we do here. But we made a good effort at it. They worked hard to get the word out. And they, they weren't chosen for best in nation, but best in state is still a great honor. Came with it $5,000 check, which we just received today for our computer science program at Sentinel. So we'll use that for a variety of things. Some purchases and then money to pay for our club activities and things like that. So very excited. So let me introduce these guys and have them come up. First, we have Tony Gilli. We have Cody, blanking on your last name, Cody Curtis, sorry. I deal with these guys and so many people. Preston Stevens and Zane Sharard. So come on up, guys. So three of these guys are sophomores. One is a junior. There was also three other group members who couldn't make it tonight. A couple more juniors and another sophomore. So I expect these guys to hopefully try again next year to win. So do any of you want to talk just a teeny bit about your app? Preston, I know, I know you got it.
Um, our, our app idea, our app concept was, um, we were kind of sick of Google Classroom and the MCPS, uh, like, kind of like grading thing, like Q Student Portal. We're, we were just kind of sick with the, kind of like unaccessibility of it. It was hard to access, especially on phones. So we wanted to come up with an app idea that would create communication and grading and assignments for both teachers and students to make their lives easier.
So feel free, if you get the chance, to search on YouTube and you can see the, the video they presented. If you search for Sentinel High School Classroom Assistant, it should show up. So they both submitted a two-minute version and then an edited down 30-minute commercial version. 30 seconds, sorry. The 30-second one, you can ignore my strange acting in it because I was trying to be silly and then everyone that sees it says I, I look like a robot. So I may as well be a robot, spend so much time with computers. So anything else you guys want to say? All right, thanks for giving us time to talk about this. And let's give these guys another hand.
Again, I'd just like to express my appreciation to Mr. Landy. As you know, he's basically built this program from the ground up. It's the first high school computer science classes using the Project Lead the Way curriculum that we have in the district. And he's done a great job recruiting students. The program continues to grow. And I think that this is just a wonderful opportunity for the students to get some practical, hands-on experience that will lead them to choices after high school, whether it's post-secondary education or career field. So great work for the students. I think thinking outside the box is critical, obviously, but also having the tools in order to understand the technology is really great. And we certainly appreciate your efforts on behalf of your classmates at Sentinel High School and again, appreciate Mr. Landy and the time and energy that he invests in the program. So thank you, Dan.
And I'll just add my word on behalf of all the trustees. We're excited to see all these amazing innovative things going on in the schools, especially with students' sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And for me personally, just because I took coding in college when dinosaurs roamed the earth. And I think it's changed a bit since then. Coding helped me in so many different ways, just be able to think about things critically, trial and error, things like that. So I'm so excited that you were state champions. That's really cool. So my personal congratulations as well. Thanks. Any other comments?
I just had a quick question. I was wondering, Ms. Landy, is this, is the app currently being used by Sentinel teachers and students? Is it available or do we have a big rollout coming?
They actually didn't create the app at this point. So the way the competition works is you promote the idea. And then if you qualify for nationals, then they give you resources and training to create it. So something I'd like to see actually created down the road, though. So these guys are all in the same class, learning how to develop Android applications. So maybe it's something we'll work on as we get further into the spring.
Thanks. Looking forward to it.
Well, thank you so much. And you're welcome to stay in much more of the meeting. But I know you probably have activities and homework, so feel free to leave when you need to. But we'd love you to stay for a little bit. So we'll go on to the next item, which is the student trustee reports. And so I'm happy to see we have a number of student trustees here at this meeting. And so we know that you don't necessarily want to stay for the whole meeting, but we'd love to hear from you. And so why don't we start with Brianna in the middle and we'll go left and then right. We'll mix it up a little.
So I'm here to report on activities that are going on and have happened in the last month at Big Sky. So just some athletic news. Seniors Cassidy Pierce and Victor Lemeza have been invited to participate in the 18th Annual Shodair Classic, Soccer Classic in Helena on July 8th. This is being held at Carroll College. And the selection put these, puts these players amongst the top athletes in Montana who have demonstrated exceptional talent on the playing field, along with scholarly achievements and exemplary citizenship. The spring sports meeting is on March 6th. Boys and girls basketball have their playoff games today. The girls are playing Hellgate and the boys are playing Capital in Helena. Some state swimming results. Adam Zimmer won both of his events, setting the state record in both and getting an All-American Time Standard. So we're very proud of him. Some wrestling state results. Freshman Trevin Willzine placed second. Dougie Swanson, KJ Swanson, Kyle Gordon, and Jet Ravish placed third. And Stormy Kip placed sixth. Some news from the academic side of our school. The group of 11 diploma candidates just handed in their final drafts of their extended essays on Monday. The extended essay is a 4,000-word essay on the topic that students choose. And they are submitted to someone in the, so for example, I submitted my essay with a human rights topic. And so someone who is probably a professor and somewhere in the world will grade it. So that's kind of scary. So my paper was on the effects of climate change on the human rights of people living in Latin America. And some other examples are the effect of drugs on human brain patterns and how Olympic Games diffuse tension between city-states. Also, Big Sky chemistry teacher Dave Jones was recently selected to participate in the Polar Trek Program as a teacher and researcher fellow. He was one of 12 chosen from a pool of over 200 applicants. He will be working with Dr. Michael De Gramprey, chemistry professor at the University of Montana, studying carbon dioxide and ocean acidification in the Arctic Ocean. And this will happen this coming August. Also, 200 Big Sky students competed at the math counts competition today at the University of Montana. Some arts and activity news. Our speech and debate season has wrapped up. The varsity speech and debate team competed at the double A state tournament in Bozeman on January 27th through the 28th. This year, we had a very young team, but we had two seniors, Addie Smith and Alicia Boone, who led the team. And together, the team put in Big Sky's strongest performance at state in the past four years and had 11 students completing, competing in elimination rounds, which is the highest number of students in at least the past five years. So our speech and debate team is continuing to improve. In the final rounds, Whitley Odyke placed sixth in dramatic interpretation and senior Alicia Boone placed third in impromptu speaking. And we're proud of Alicia because she also became the first speech and debate competitor in Big Sky's history to be named to the all-state team. The Big Sky High School lip dub, which I made for my cast project for IB, reached over 6,000 views in two weeks. So I'm very proud of that. There is a link to the video on the Big Sky website if you scroll down towards the bottom. If you still haven't seen it, I think you would love it. So please watch it if you haven't. The Big Sky Drama Department performed at the Montana Thespian Convention held at the University of Montana on February 3rd and 4th. They performed The Legend of Sleepy Hollow, which is written by Laramie Dean, who is the drama teacher at Hellgate. Their performance won Outstanding Ensemble and Outstanding Soundscape Awards. The play was student-directed by Caitlin Moore and stage managed by Tatum Kirshenhader, both seniors. Caitlin and Tatum both auditioned for and received scholarships from the University of Montana to enter their technical theater department in the fall. I was awarded the Montana State Thespian Merit Scholarship. Our Big Sky DECA contributed $340 for a traffic education scholarship during the eighth grade showcase on January 25th. And Mark Krostlich was, who currently attends Meadow Hill, won and he will be attending Big Sky next year. Also, DECA has been working very hard to get Big Sky an ATM machine and we finally got one. And it is located next to the trophy cases by the office. Members of DECA attended the state competition conference in Great Falls. The group did a fantastic job. Madison Harris, Danielle Buchanan, Kyle Fussell, Emma Blonda, Ashley Liu, and Dexter Crago will be attending the international competition in Anaheim in April for the events they competed in at the conference. And then Hallie Hawkins, Ethan Osterhout, and Dane Pinkerton will be attending the conference as well for Leadership Academies. Many students from Big Sky attended the All Northwest Music Festival in Bellevue, Washington. Some of the people who participated were Ellie Michaels, Janie Anderson, Samantha Mathis, Kirsten Boyer, Jonas Almstead, Charlie Chapman, Logan Rauch, and Ashley Jacks. And those people were all attending the festival for choir. And then Jack Crapo attended the festival for band. The choir dessert show is coming up on March 3rd at 7:00 PM. And we're, to wrap up my report, we're very proud of our Aerie International and Aerie Big Sky students. They won the highest national awards again for the National Councils of Teachers of English. Additionally, students in Aerie International submitted poems, short stories, photographs, and portfolios to the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, and they were very successful. And I'm going to read out who received awards. Jared Burkhart, for his poem Just Waiting for Winter, received a gold key. And then we had multiple silver key recipients. Jared Burkhart for a poem. Alicia Boone for a poem and a photograph. Mari Costa for a short story. Johanna Mitchell for a poem. Emma Schweig for a poem. Addison Smith for a short story. Kenneth Erickson for two poems. And then we had multiple honorable mentions as well. Alicia Boone for two poems and two photographs. Jared Burkhart for his portfolio and for a poem. Jake Campbell for a short story. Mari Costa for her portfolio and for her two poems. Johanna Mitchell for her portfolio and for a poem. Emma Schweig for a poem and a short story. And Corey Stegels for a poem. And all of those people are seniors this year, which is awesome that they get to go out with a bang. Also, our Big Sky celebrated our 13th Diversity Week last week. Diversity Week is a chance for students to learn about varied perspectives on community, national, and international issues, as well as explore their own identities. Thank you for sticking with me during that extremely long report. We're very proud of the things that are going on at Big Sky right now.
Thanks, Brianna. Brandon, did you want to go next? And I know Dylan gave a report last week, so probably not one this week. Okay, and we had Gabby last week as well.
All right. First off, I have to ask, did you say that there's this guy that goes to Big Sky named Charlie Chapman?
Yes.
Okay, that is one lucky guy. All right.
He doesn't talk.
I'm sure he doesn't need to talk to be funny. All right, so over at Willard, we just had our e-portfolio presentations where we present our classes, curricular and extracurricular activities to our families and advisory teachers as we do every trimester. Our third trimester is starting on March 7th, where we will receive new classes as well as new students from other schools. And our second round of graduations is coming up on March 2nd at the end of this trimester, which is sad for us, but quite happy for them. Quaff o' quaff, this kind of penty. No Poe fans in here. Okay. Thank you. Our latest issue of the Willard Wire was just released. I think it turned out pretty well. I really can't stress how much I like the new members of that class, no matter how much I try. This issue was actually a couple weeks late coming out. So the next issue is actually set to come out in a few days around the time of graduation. So that'll be really fun and exciting to design sarcasm. Yeah, actually, that's all I have for this month. It was a short report, but it was a short month, so I'm sure you guys can forgive me.
Thank you both for those great reports. And thank you, Dylan, for your report last week. And thanks to Seeley Swan and Hellgate for their reports last week. We appreciate you being here. And as I indicated, we'd love to have you stay, but we know you have very busy lives. So feel, this is the second meeting of the month, and so Dylan's already been to one. So please, you'll leave when you need to. Thanks. So now we move on to the Health Insurance Trust Report, which is found on page six. And it's the Routine Health Insurance Trust Fund Report for the month of January, not 2107, but really 2017. We'll make that change. And now we go on to item number six C, which is announcements from superintendent Thane.
Thank you. And today's a special report for a couple reasons. First of all, we learned today the names of the candidates for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. And those students are students who are seniors in standing, who have completed the ACT or SAT prior to October of this year. Those scores are screened nationally to identify who the candidates are. And 4,000 candidates were identified nationally. An application packet then is sent to each of those candidates. They'll be reviewed by a panel and 800 semifinalists will be announced in April. Then in May, the 161 U.S. Presidential Scholars will be announced. In the state of Montana, there were 42 students who were announced as candidates based on their test scores. Seven from Missoula County Public Schools, the most of any district in the state of Montana, certainly most of any double A districts. 27 of the 42 students came from the double A districts. So the students from MCPS include Emma Barrett Catton from Hellgate, Brendan Campbell, also from Hellgate, Magnolia Chin from Sentinel, Eva Kazimi, who's also from Hellgate, Sydney Nowland from Sentinel, Jackson Petty from Sentinel, and Alyssa Taylor from Hellgate. So seven MCPS students. And certainly, we're very proud of their accomplishments and wish them well as they progress to the next stage. Last Friday evening, Hellgate High School had a rare honor. Alan Vazutti is an internationally renowned jazz musician. He played a concert with the Hellgate and U of M Jazz Bands Friday night. It was absolutely outstanding and we presented him with Distinguished Alumni Award from Missoula County Public Schools and Hellgate High School. And he was really taken back. Leon Slater put the program together, an outstanding band director. And he wrote me an email early in the week and said throughout the evening, Alan just went on and on about how surprised and pleased he was to have been recognized by Missoula County Public Schools. And he's a graduate, late 1960s, from Hellgate High School. So he's one of our certainly distinguished alums. In terms of the dates that are of importance coming up, most can be found on page seven in the packet. There are about four that I would like to highlight. First of all, parent-teacher conferences for the K-8 schools will be conducted the week of March 16th and 17th. That's the Thursday and Friday that immediately precede spring break. Many of the schools will have conferences in the evenings throughout the week because it's more convenient for parents at that time. High school conferences, grades nine through 12, will be again Friday, April 7th on your calendar, but they'll be conducted generally in the evenings during that week. We have professional development scheduled for K through 12 on Monday, April 24th. It's the second professional development day that we build into our school calendar. And we have a number of activities in which staff can gain some professional development credit. And then finally, and I'm sure the students, were they here, would appreciate this. Spring break is March 20th through 24th. Administration office will remain open, but most of our school buildings will be closed during that week. Thank you.
Thanks. Now we move on to six D, which is announcements from any trustees. Many trustees have any announcements? Seeing none? Yes, no?
Oh, just a quick, yeah.
Sure.
It's a quick update, kind of a follow-up from a senior project last year. But a student that we worked with, or has done stand-up comedy in both CS Porter and for their senior project, Mattie Holland, competed in the Missoula Comedy Competition and qualified for the finals, which I thought was really cool to see a senior project go on to, to grow like that. So I will update everybody. Finals are in May, but it was cool to see Mattie get that far, so.
Any other comments from trustees? Well, since I know Mattie and his brother Bailey, I'm pretty excited for them. That's, I'll have to say, congratulations my next year. Thank you for updating us. Anything else? Seeing none, then we turn the page and we're on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are routine and perfunctory that we usually see on a regular basis, often on a monthly basis. And so at this point, there are three. One is to approve MCPS student attendance agreements. The other is to approve out-of-district attendance agreements. So each of these is related to each other in the sense, one, are students asking to come to school in MCPS? And others are notification that we have students who fall under MCPS boundaries that are going to school somewhere else. And the final thing is to approve revenue and expenditure reports, which is something that we see every month. And so this is the January 2017 Revenue and Expenditure Report. Because they're on the consent agenda, the trustees will not discuss these items, but we do have public comment opportunity for these items. And so is there a motion to approve the three items on the consent agenda? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Kendall. And as I indicated, we won't be discussing them, but is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the three items on the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees. President and trustee Wake has come to the meeting as well. Thank you. And now we move on to all business under the topic of finance, operations, and maintenance. And so this is a topic that we have seen at prior meetings, which is to approve the Stagner track improvements. You have discussed this before with us, Pat. So why don't you let us know where we're at at this point? And what action the administration is recommending is that the trustees grant permission to issue an RFP for the track replacement if the purchase through a state-approved vendor is not a viable option.
Yeah, thank you. So this would be the, really the first step in, in pulling together some numbers that we would present to the board in terms of what the, what this cost might look like. And the, one of the main conversations is, is how we would fund, fund the improvement. And we've identified and talked about a couple of sources, including a high school intercap loan, funds from the building fund, and then elementary rental proceeds. It is possible that, that a Senate bill that's, that's being discussed that the legislature would, would help in this regard, Senate Bill 307, which allows school districts to permissively levy up to a certain capped amount funds for facility projects. So there'll be more to come on that next board meeting. But this, this step is really the first step, which is to get some numbers in front of the board to take a look at.
Are there any questions for Pat? For Pat before I entertain a motion? Yes?
I guess, Pat, if you could just kind of go over, you had mentioned resurfacing? And then, and this is saying track replacement. Do we have a, are we going to look at prices for both? Or is that kind of where we are? We're not sure exactly, you have a total scope or?
Yeah, I think that's right. I would, I would say that it probably is more in line with a renovation than a resurface. We've, we've tried to resurface. So it would probably look a lot like what we did at the stadium through the Bond project, but at a smaller scale. It's an eight-lane track.
No jumbo truck?
No jumbo truck. We probably wouldn't have, most likely wouldn't have the same competitive level of surface that we do at the stadium. But I think what, and Burley can probably talk to this better than I can. than I can, a lot of what they're experiencing at Stagner is years of, of cracking and heaving with the underlayment, so it probably requires replacement underneath the surface.
And quick follow-up, Marsha? And maybe this is for Burley. Burley, can you just kind of let us know who else all uses a track and kind of, I know it's not just Sentinel for track, and I know that other schools and the community uses it, so I was going to get a little idea of that.
Yeah, actually, it's probably our heaviest-used space in our, in most of our grounds. We have Hellgate and Sentinel both use it for track practice, and then we have all three of our middle schools use it for middle school meets, and then we also have a couple of different track clubs here in Missoula that use it, and of course, the people who are walkers and runners and stuff like that. It's heavily, heavily used.
And it's ready for?
It's long overdue, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other trustee questions for Pat? Seeing none, then is there a motion to authorize, to grant permission to issue an RFP for the Stagner track replacement if the purchase through a state-approved vendor is not a viable option? Any such motion? Moved by Trustee Smith. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Kendall. And now, any board discussion? Probably not too much discussion until we actually see the numbers that are going to be connected up with this. Any public comment on this topic? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of granting permission to the administration to issue an RFP for the Stagner track replacement if the purchase through a state-approved vendor is not a viable option, please indicate by raising your hand. That is all trustees present. And then we move on to a somewhat-related item that we had discussed at the last meeting as well, which is to authorize development of an agreement with the Parks Department for the city of Missoula, for the Fort Missoula tennis courts. And so the recommendation is that the trustees authorize the administration to develop an agreement with the Parks Department to renovate the Fort Missoula tennis courts, subject to approval, appropriate financing through the State Board of Investments. So I know we've talked about this in the past, but if you want to just kind of remind us what this is all about.
You bet, and Superintendent Thane's had some conversations with the Parks Department, and there are some steps that would have to take place before we presented the board with a proposed agreement, which we would do, assuming we were able to reach an agreement. This would allow us the opportunity to engage with the city Parks Department in discussions. The Parks Department's also working with some other groups in terms of their participation and financing, so this may or may not happen, happen depending upon those steps, but we would certainly be bringing any proposed agreement to the board.
Any question for Pat? Sorry, Trustee Lorenzen?
It says that it's contingent on, MCPS participation is contingent on securing funding and initiating construction prior to June 30th. Is that just because of our fiscal year, or is there another reason we have an end date like that?
I'll take that one. I, the city is in negotiations with a number of groups, and we want to make sure that the entire financing package comes together and that the project moves forward. So we wanted to put a timeline on it, and the city actually has a contractor who's looking for a response by the end of March in order to initiate construction. If they're unable to put it together immediately for the March response, I think that the prices would change, and so it may behoove us to make sure that we're committing only in this first round of conversations. There may be an opportunity for a little latitude with that contractor, so we hedged on the dates a little bit. If it extends beyond that, I think we would have to have new conversations about the entire package.
Trustee Decker?
Just wondering how long ago the tennis courts as they are were built? I'm assuming it's like more than 22 years?
Actually, it's not. I believe that they were rebuilt in the year 2000. There is a difference, though, in the way they would be constructed this time. Apparently, my understanding is that there's a significant amount of clay out in that area, which has caused some difficulties with the current surface, so they're going to rebuild the courts in a different fashion. They're going to use tensioned concrete instead of asphalt as a base, and my understanding is it would have a 30-year warranty, and the expectation that it would extend beyond that. So yes, we're looking at 22-year commitment here, which in Montana's climate, sounds like a little bit of a risk, but it will be engineered differently than the previous courts were. Good question.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion that we authorize, that trustees authorize the administration to develop an agreement with the Parks Department to renovate the Fort Missoula tennis court, subject to the appropriate financing from the State Board of Investments, and also contingent upon the city securing all necessary funding and initiating construction prior to June 30th, 2017? Moved by Trustee Decker. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Smith?
I just wanted to make sure I understood. So, Pat, this, you had mentioned that this, whatever the agreement is that comes out of these discussions, that comes before us, before, so we're not approving the agreement, we're approving the, to get there, to get to the plan, develop the plan.
Exactly, exactly.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of recognizing, authorizing the administration to develop an agreement with the Parks Department, subject to all the terms and conditions we just talked about, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to trustees present. Then we move on to new business, and it looks like we're going to be talking a bit about roofs and smart schools, and so Burley, if you want to, all right, it looks like Mark's going to start us out, and then Burley's going to be the center, about an update on smart schools 2020.
And actually, I really have nothing to add at this point. Burley can give us a quick update. We have a number of committees that are active right now, going through the next round of selections, and then we can get right into the items on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just throw in there that, as Superintendent Thane said, we have some committees going on. We have Sentinel Architect, RFQs that were due for Sentinel this week, so we'll be screening those out on Thursday, and then interviewing next, next Thursday, the 9th. We have GCCM for Cold Springs, RFPs. We'll be doing, we'll be reviewing RFPs on the 8th of February, I'm sorry, March, and, and interviewing on the 15th of March. And then we have Washington General Contractor Construction Managers going out for advertisement on March 19th and 26th, so always making some great strides to get summer work done. And then, of course, we're working internally with principals and other administrators on, or other district leadership on summer logistics. So there's a lot of summer logistics going on with getting Low &amp; Franklin moved back in, getting Hellgate ready for construction, some construction, getting Washington ready for construction, Russell for some construction. We'll see some construction at Hellgate over spring break, and then probably see construction starting there directly after that, so we should see construction at, before school even ends there, so some great progress we're making right now, really busy.
Thanks. Any questions for Burley or Mark? Seeing none, well, thank you for that update. Sounds like there's a lot of things going on. Next topic is to award a bid for a partial re-roof at Sentinel High School. The agenda indicates that you received three bids. The administration recommends that the trustees award Metal Works of Montana with the partial re-roofing project at Sentinel High School in the amount of $698,095. Burley, anything to add, other than they came in as the lowest bidder?
No, very straightforward.
Any questions for Burley before we entertain a motion? Trustee Lorenzen?
So how are the bids coming in relative to our preliminary budgeting for the bond?
Well, we have, we, when we have the designs, when the roofs are designed by our designer, which is, was CTA, they put, they put an estimated budget to it. It's really ballpark kind of figure. We're, we're under those numbers, but not, we're not drastically under, but we're seeing, we're seeing great numbers right now, good competitive numbers, and, and all of the, in all of these, as you'll see tonight. So every, every one of them are under what, what our designer had projected, but, and I think it's, it's, it's because we're getting them out early right now, and I don't think there's a lot of work that's out right now for the summer.
Any other questions, trustees?
And I remember, and I know that last fall, I guess, or last summer, we were going out for a lot of roofs, and then we held back a little bit when the price started going up. Just from what I'm hearing you say is that it was worth it, and the prices have come back down, and, and now that we're, we'll, we'll probably do the same thing, and are these, these are pretty big numbers for, are big roofs, I guess is what I should say. But I mean, are there other big projects like this coming along? I mean, are these roofs going to just continue adding to it? I mean, when we're getting around to the last school, are we going to go back to the first one?
So, so yeah, we have, we actually have two more that'll be coming out here soon. We have Rattlesnake's Gym, which was originally on the Rattlesnake Project, but because of timing of that project, we chose to take that off of the contractors' contracts. We got a credit back for that and decided to take it back out this year, not for any reasons that we just discussed, as far as trying to keep bids low, but we are putting that back out again. We should see that go out here probably the next two weeks. And then we also have Jefferson Roof will go out as well, so we will see a couple more roofs go out. I don't know if we'll send out many more this year, but, but, because we have five out right now, and I think we're pretty comfortable with that. I do know the market, just kind of in western Montana, there's some big projects that are going to be coming out roofing-wise, so, and we got ahead of all of them, so just we're talking with our designer, they're, they're expecting a lineup in Kalispell. I believe Flathead Valley Community College is getting their roofed, so it was a big thing, it was big, it was very important to get ahead of them.
Just in response to two of the questions, first of all, to Diane's question about the overall numbers, one of the discussions that we've had internally is that obviously we're managing the entire high school bond as a single entity, so we have estimates for the various projects. It's difficult to go back and say, you know, we saved X dollars on one and Y on another, because that will have to be a little bit fluid. There will be some projects certainly that will come in over, but I would just give kudos to Burley and to the Holting team, because they have managed these projects in a fashion that has saved us significant dollars, just as you referenced, Mike, with the timing of the bids, and the fact that we've avoided a lot of the escalation charges, the inflation that we projected on these projects by being very aggressive with the timeline, and as Burley referenced, there's a lot of work out there, and I know it's causing him to lose sleep at night, but it's really been beneficial for the taxpayers and for the district. So as aggressive as we can be to make sure we avoid that inflationary factor is the strategy we'll continue to employ. And I would just, again, say that Holting has been worth their weight in gold. I can't imagine us trying to manage all these projects internally without their support, and certainly their knowledge of the industry has allowed us to save hundreds of thousands of dollars on a number of projects.
Any other questions or comments?
When will the work start on the Sentinel re-roof? When school gets out?
Right when school gets out, they'll be, they should be moving in and setting up dumpsters, tearing down, and these are, they're not complete re-roofs, although Sentinel is a large portion of Sentinel's getting re-roofed with this, with this project, which is very, very good, and it, and it's, it's, it's important to say that we're taking all the roofing off and putting on all-new insulation and, and new roofing material. We're not overlaying anything, so we're actually getting a better insulated material, which is obviously more sustainable.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to award Metal Works of Montana with the partial re-roofing project at Sentinel, at Sentinel High School in the amount of $698,095? Moved by Trustee Kendall, and seconded by Trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of awarding Metal Works of Montana with the partial re-roofing project at Sentinel High School, please indicate by raising your hand. That's all trustees present. Then we move on to the next, partial re-roof at CS Porter, and the recommendation is that the trustees award Summit Roofing with the partial re-roofing at CS Porter in the amount of $325,520. Burley, anything of significance on this? Does it differ in any great way from what we just talked about?
Not at all. It's exactly the same.
Any questions for Burley about this one? Then is there a motion to award Summit Roofing with the partial re-roofing project at CS Porter in the amount of $325,520? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen, and seconded by Trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of awarding Summit Roofing with the partial re-roof at CS Porter, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Oh, right, thank you so much. Elizabeth, so smart, and I'm not. So we're going to redo this again. The motion and the second are fine, but only elementary trustees will be voting on this, so thank you for catching that, Elizabeth. So all elementary trustees in favor of awarding Summit Roofing with the partial re-roofing project, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all elementary trustees present. Thank you so much for that. And then would, we didn't do this at the beginning, but it seems like it would make sense to move to the addendum now, because it's the same topic, and so is it okay to revise the agenda, to consider the A1 and A2 agenda items at this point, since they're directly related to what we just did? No objection, I see nods. So we'll move on to the addendum item numbered 1A1, which is to award the bid for a partial re-roof at Hawthorne Elementary School, so it's elementary, thank you again, Elizabeth. And so there were three bids, and the recommendation is that the trustees award Summit Roofing with the partial re-roofing project at Hawthorne in the amount of $379,188. Anything unusual about this one, Burley?
No.
Any questions for Burley? Seeing none, is there a motion to award Summit Roofing with the partial re-roofing project at Hawthorne? Moved by Trustee Smith, and seconded by Trustee McDonald. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor of awarding Summit Roofing with the partial re-roofing project at Hawthorne, please indicate by raising your hand. Katcha-tacking in class! And that's unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to the Willard Alternative High School Program Architect Selection, and so the recommendation is that we authorize the engagement of CTA architects, is it slash engineers, or is it just architects, engineers, to assist in the programming, planning, design, and construction administration for the demolition and construction of Willard Alternative High School Program, subject to successful negotiations of a contract. So Burley, do you want to tell us, we've been seeing these requests, but do you want to just fill us in on how this happened?
Yeah, so we, we have a committee that is put together to review the RFQs, and, and then we select up to four candidates from there to interview. The committee, which consisted of Superintendent Thane, Pat McHugh, Kevin Richland, Julie, Roba Tye, and myself, spent those two days looking at those, and we chose CTA, and I appreciate everybody in the committee. I know for those of you board members that have been on that, it's very time-consuming, so we do thank you guys for your time for that. As far as the architectural engineering, I know it's kind of weird, it has a slash there, but every architect brings in their own engineering team as part of the request for qualifications, which would consist of civil, electrical, mechanical engineering, or whatever is pertinent to that project.
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Loren?
Can you tell us the preliminary or the rough budget for Willard?
Um, well, it's the, it's about $5 to $6 million. That's overall budget, so you have, that overall budget consists of construction and all soft costs, design costs, fees, permits, that kind of stuff, so we haven't came up with a construction budget this time, but with the overall budget, it's $5 to $6 million.
Any other questions, Trustee Decker?
Thanks. What's the process with that architect firm from here in terms of input from the school, community, neighborhood, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so that was talked a lot about in, in the interview process. We wanted to make sure we had a firm that was very proactive with that, so of course we have, each, each building has their education innovative team that we include in, in the design. We felt very comfortable with CTA in regards to that, and that their, their community planning was, was a, a great plan. was, was a, um, a great plan, that they would include community and involve, involve them in whether it's a, a community charrette or keeping them informed. Because we know, we know that community is very, very involved in Willard and that, and that site. So we want to make sure we keep them involved as much as possible.
And I would just add that I did meet with Mike Painter from the Neighborhood Council and have asked to be on their agenda for their next meeting. Mike and I have emailed routinely throughout this process and he's been very engaged and very supportive of the project and wants to be a conduit so that we can be in close contact with that community.
Any other questions for anybody? Seeing none, then is there a motion to authorize the engagement of CTA architects, engineers to assist in a lot of things concerning Willard High School, subject to successful negotiations of a contract? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Breckstad. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Smith?
I'm going to not vote.
Repeat.
Because I'm going to abstain. I know I was going to get it wrong if I guessed. I'm going to abstain because my company is on one of the engineering teams.
Thanks. And Burley, I just wanted to say thank you for your comments and also Mark about community involvement and also the school community's involvement and the education leadership team. Willard's such a unique project and I was sorry to not be able to serve on that particular selection committee myself because of that. As an alternative school, the space in which you work really drives a lot of what you can do and what you're able to do and what your identity is. And so I know there are lots of people who are very interested in what that's going to look like for Willard long-term. And I think it's a really unique opportunity for the district to grow that program in some ways that are potentially very, very cool. So thank you for saying that about CTA as an organization that's interested in that kind of back and forth conversation as they go forward.
May I say something? Oh, you can, second. We'll get to talk about it. Any more board discussion or comments? Seeing none. Now you can.
But thank you. I just wanted to respond to Grace since we've been.
If you can state your name and if you have a job.
Sorry, I'm Julie Robitaille, Executive Regional Director, who works with Willard Alternative Program. And we engaged in a process this fall for Willard Visioning, just talking about the program and how we hope to see it evolve and become even more connected with the community in general. And we're going, going to use that information and some of those team members to help guide the facilities planning as well. So we were very pleased with CTA architects and that they spoke a great deal about the community and the neighborhood specifically. And they have some great ideas and are really open to that Willard Visioning process and that the facility is an extension of the program.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of authorizing the engagement of CTA architects, engineers to do all the things listed concerning the Willard Alternative High School Program Building, subject to successful negotiations of contract, please indicate your support or voting yes by raising your hand. And that is all trustees present with the exception of Mike Smith, who's abstaining. And thanks. And now we'll move back to the agenda, item number four, which is the Budget and Levy Update. There is documents in our agenda at page 20, and this is an update on budget projections for 2017. It is 2018 as opposed to 1018 fiscal year. And so I know a lot of things are dependent on what's going on in the legislature and so this is an ever-shifting conversation, it seems like, but if you can give us the most current conversation version.
Yep, well put. In fact, the document that's, that's attached to page 20, you can pretty much ignore the, the, I'm going to hand out and put up on the slide, a updated version. Part of the reason for the changes is the, we received some information from OPI regarding the inputs into our budgets and, and that includes a disproportionate cost reimbursement amount that's built into our special ed component of the school funding formula. The amount that's allocated is a total sum that's allocated among districts in the state and it's based upon also a formula essentially tied to expenditures. And so I think is special education expenditures. And as expenditures increase around the state, then there's more allocation of those limited resources. So it has the effect of, in this case, lowering the estimated maximum budget and lowering what, what the levies might look like. So maybe I'll throw this up on the screen. You all have it in front of you and for, for anyone else who might be watching, we can go through what's in the packet on page 20 and just sort of identify what, what changes real briefly. Significantly what, what changes is if you look at the, and I'm looking at page 20, you can look at the document that I handed out. The, near the top, there's two columns, elementary, secondary, and in the shaded area, I'm showing the amount of the levy. And what we're estimating the levy that would get to a max budget would be, would be $804,862 in the elementary and then $77,322 in the high school to get to maximum budget under the funding formula. That would result in a general fund budget of $37,884,719 in the elementary and $29,428,201 in the high school. And so that, that's a budgetary increase of just over $900,000 in the elementary and about $340,000 in the high school. It's quite a bit less than what we initially projected, especially in the, well, in both districts. The formula or this calculation is based upon the original governor's proposal that did not include data for achievement as a funding component. It's one-half a percent inflationary increase, which is part of, is it House Bill 191 or Senate Bill? House Bill 191. And it does not include the natural, natural resource development payment. So the, what was submitted to the governor and signed did include the data for achievement, but we won't know if that's part of House Bill 2, the funding bill, until later on. So we're kind of taking a conservative approach here and just assuming that it's not going to be part of the, the funding formula. But hopefully it sticks in there. If it does, it means about $111,000 elementary and about $77,000 high school. Then you'll see that we've, I've included some estimates for staffing, salary and benefit obligations to the district. These are based upon our collective bargaining agreements that were negotiated, along with our estimates of the cost of steps and lanes and that type of thing, as well as they're near the bottom one-third, some additional obligations that, that we're aware of, including classroom staff, which is fluid, this just assumes three. Also custodial staff for additional space associated with the bond projects, the inflationary increase for the SRO, CRO, SSO folks that work in the schools. And then our property liability insurance, we'll probably see this on an annual basis. This is an estimate, but as we add space, as we improve space, the value of our property goes up and so will the insurance obligation. And then finally utilities. And this is based upon some information, but it includes an estimate of the utilities that might be related to the college. So we're just trying to incorporate all of the obligations that we might see next year. And you'll see with, with the, the max levy in both districts, we're, we're still working with a deficit of about 460 and 430, or 480, sorry, respectively. And, you know, again, there's, there's things that we'll work with to make, make ourselves balanced by the end of the year. But at this point in time, we're primarily looking at, at what the, what the budget picture would look like and what the levies might look like. And so that's, that's the main, main point of going through, through these projections. I wouldn't be surprised, our A and B is set, so we're, we're solid with our A and B number. That's the biggest factor. But I wouldn't be surprised to see additional changes, both legislative and from OPI. We've seen that in the past where those preliminary numbers they send out change. So this is, this is a good look for, at this point in time.
So I would ask trustees to take a look at page 20. And about two-thirds of the way down the page, you see a subtotal. And that subtotal is after Pat had run his budget projections and then anticipated the obligations for staffing. And you can see that the elementary was to the good, about $117,000, and there was a deficit of about $74,000 in the high school. And as we looked at that original computation, we contemplated that via use of an interlocal agreement, we were close to being balanced with the two districts. If you look at the addendum that he passed out and look at the same line tonight, you'll see that now we reflect about $156,000 deficit on the elementary side and about a $372,000 deficit on the high school side. And I think what's significant, again, Pat referenced, there are some potential legislative changes and some changes from OPI, but it's a very different budget picture than we were looking at even a week ago. And the biggest difference is if you look at the estimated general fund, which is at the top, it's the first line of new numbers, you'll see from the packet, the estimate went from $38,158,000 down to $37,884, which was a reduction of about $260,000. And on the secondary side, went from what's on page 20 in the packet of $29,725,000 down to $29,428,000, which is a $300,000 reduction. One issue that the legislature has not yet addressed, and tomorrow is the transmittal deadline, is special education costs. And there was also a proposal to apply the inflationary factor to special ed costs. So there is some work to be done. All the professional organizations in the state continue to lobby the legislature and hopefully that piece will come into play. As Pat referenced, we also took a conservative view with regard to data for achievement. It was included in House Bill 191, which the governor has signed, but the rumor is that it will likely not be funded via House Bill 2, which is still in process. So at the present time, we're taking the more conservative approach until we know what the resolution ultimately will be.
This is information only, but any additional questions? Trustee Lorenz?
Hey, I'm, I'm trying to follow. And so are we looking at about 2.4 million additional dollars for salaries in the two districts combined? Did I figure that out right?
I'd say it's about right.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't following the subtotals.
Oh, that's, that's not a subtotal of the total salaries and benefits, but a, if you take the subtotal of revenue increases, the $1,157.
Right.
Subtract those.
So, so is that pretty close? 2.4 million in increased salaries for teachers?
2.26.
Thank you, Mike. 2.26 million? Okay.
And that's overall.
Any other comments or questions? It's information only, but any board comment? Seeing none will keep us updated. It's, I guess with every legislative session.
One clarification to trustee Lorenz's question. If you look right above those obligations, you'll see that we built into the budget $480,000 in savings associated with retiree savings. So there are some increased obligations, but there's also a credit based on those retirements that we anticipate. At present, I believe we have 15 retirements of the 20 that we've projected.
Yes.
And we don't have a good total yet on what the dollars would be on the classified side.
Trustee Smith?
Has the period for early notification passed?
Five to you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item seven or six, which I'll suggest that we talk about all together. There's one action item in there, but they're related in the sense that one is to review the ballot language for the elementary school trustee, which is.
We skipped over this one.
Oh, sorry. Never mind. We're back up to five, which is requirement to convey district real property. And so this is information about the mechanisms by which the district can convey real property owned, owned by it. So there's, looks like there's several governing statutes. So Pat, if you want to provide us with some information?
What we're talking about is, is what, what it would look like if we are looking at the conveyance of real property as a school district. And there's really two means of conveying real property in, in terms of a process. One is by election to the, to the electorate and a majority prevails in terms of a vote on a ballot measure. And, and the, the familiarity you guys have with elections, this is similar to what would happen with the trustee election where 70 days prior to the election, we would adopt a resolution calling for the election and also within that period of time, certified ballots identifying the question. And as with our elections, there's a certain cost to running the election that we, that we utilize, thankfully, the county elections office for. So that's one, one method. The, the other method really is, I would say is the, would be the first look at, and that's by resolution of the Board of Trustees. And if, if we couldn't fall within the, a resolution to sell, then we would look to the election. So would you skip it one ahead? There, Mike. So the sale by resolution would require that the Board of Trustees that make a determination that the site is or is about to become obsolete, abandoned, undesirable, or unsuitable for school purposes of the district. So that's the determination that the Board would make in the form of a resolution. That resolution would then be adopted by the Board. The resolution would be published in conformity with, with how we publish our notice of school elections. We publish in the newspaper, we post at public sites, and then we put on the webpage. But that resolution wouldn't be effective for 14 days after the initial publication. Within that 14 days, any member of the public would have an opportunity to, to object. And essentially they'd object to the finding of abandoned, obsolete, undesirable, unsuitable property. Any objection would be taken up to District Court and then the sale would, would, would be held in abeyance while the court made a determination. So the, the resolution is a more timely process if you look at it in terms of, of determination and a 14-day notice period as compared to an election and your 70-day determination in front of an election. Less costly, you wouldn't be paying for the cost of an election. Of course, you could always run it alongside a trustee election. I, I think that the property that, that we would be identifying as property that we would look at to sell would be, would fall into the resolution category. It's either been determined by virtue of our demographic study or our long-range facility study or through the work we did with the bond, that the properties fits within one of those four categories. It's, it's either not suitable for. It's, it's either not suitable for a school building, it's not suitable for a school purpose. And, and the property would likely not be contiguous to an existing school. Well, I can say that it wouldn't be. So the, let's see, the, that's sort of, that's really in a nutshell, the, the two means and methods of, of selling property. And I guess I entertain any questions you might have.
Couple of simple stupid ones first. Conveyance of property, is it for just selling or selling or buying or?
These statutes?
Yeah. These only, for what we're talking about, we're talking about us selling property.
We are.
Right? Okay. The determinations that you have up there, and I can certainly see some of the stuff that would, would fit into some of those that we have that would be of, of use to someone else. Undesirable obviously means undesirable to the school district.
Right.
In general, and not, you know, swampland.
Yes, exactly.
Someone would have to buy it, so it's going to be desirable to someone.
I think that the modifier to all of those descriptions is that for school purposes. So it's unsuitable for school purposes of the district.
And then my final question is just regarding the process where you said, in, in the resolution, we, we as the board would make the resolution, 14 days of public comment, public someone or someones, several someones of the public decide that they want to contest or whatever.
Right.
So they, they file a complaint. So then it goes to court. Those court costs are then paid by who?
That's a good question. I might have Megan answer that question. But I would assume we would, we would pay in defense. And then there's probably a possibility to request attorney fees from the district court if we argue a frivolous lawsuit or unfounded alimony claim. And then it would be up to the discretion of the district court to award attorney.
That's, that's, that's kind of what I was hoping to hear, if that's true.
The statute, unlike a lot of other statutes, don't talk about, the statute does not talk about attorney fees. There are provisions under the law. I know that there are certainly court cases that allow, we'd call equitable recovery of attorney fees for, as Pat mentioned, frivolous suit. As far as paying for defense costs, I don't know if your insurance coverage would apply. We'd have to look at it at the time. Most districts, well, you guys annually actually enter into a resolution to get rid of property. So it's the same process that you use to get rid of your desks and computers that are determined to be no longer needed. There are certain property, I think when you're looking at an election versus a resolution, you're analyzing the risk of what is the risk of having a challenge on this. So it's not an uncommon process. I actually haven't seen a challenge by a district or of a district since I've been doing schoolwork. So depending on the type of property, the risk is lower. If you're talking about usually like sale of like a school, that's more likely where you might want to consider an election.
Thank you.
And as we bring this item forward, I do for the sake of clarity, want to express that the first three properties we are talking about are parcels of land which do not have school buildings on them. And again, we've asked the community to support the school district to the tune of $158 million. There are additional projects and additional work that would need to be conducted in the coming years. And this might be an opportunity for us to put some money into the building funds by sale of property that we have deemed unsuitable as a school site and then not have to go back to the voters in order to ask them to fund those projects. So I, I would contemplate that as we move forward, if it meets with the board's approval, we would likely put out an RFQ for a Realtor, actually develop a list of Realtors who might analyze the properties, determine if they appear to be marketable and help us through that process. And obviously, we would have any properties appraised before we actually sold them. But right now, the properties that we will likely bring before the board are properties that do not have a school on them.
Does the district who, which is considering selling property, have any obligation in terms of simply getting the highest price for it to, to bring back into the district? Or in terms of whatever future uses are on that property, in terms of what it had been earmarked for? And is there anything wrinkly if that piece of property was ever approved by the voters as a school site?
Yeah, so I, I, I'm grabbing the statute so I can read you some language because it's, the statute doesn't, it does not, it doesn't require market or fair market value for it, first of all. And, but we've, we sold Roosevelt School and we followed, and this was before my time, but we followed a, an election and the election, the ballot language was may we sell the school, which was approved and authorized, and didn't mean we wouldn't get sued, which we were sued on the basis of fair market value and even though it was sold for more than appraised value. And so we prevailed and, and we also asked for attorney fees and we were not awarded attorney fees. And, and it's discretionary and not, I mean, Megan probably has more experience, that it's rare that they would be awarded. But one of the pieces of rationale offered by the district court was that you should have done a better job of marketing it from a fair market value standpoint. And that's not authoritative. It wasn't, it was a, it was part of a district court proceeding on attorney fees. But it was something that I heard and take to heart. And we too try to maximize value for property. But the part of the statute that was interesting to me as I was reading it was that it, it, let's see if I can find it. It says that the, so it goes through that language, if you, finding abandoned, obsolete, undesirable, unsuitable for school purposes of the district, the trustees may sell or otherwise dispose of the real or personal property. So as compared to selling it, you can also dispose of it. So what does that mean? And Megan and I talked a little bit about it. It could potentially be an exchange. I mean, so I think there's, there's, it's not just selling it. And it doesn't say highest market value, but certainly I'd advocate for that in most cases. Well, I can't think of a case where I wouldn't advocate for it. But I think that there's, yeah, that's right. But there's, there's some different language that, that would say that it doesn't, you know, there may be a possible, different means of disposing of the property other than by a sale. And what we would contemplate would be some form of an exchange.
Yeah, just generally, I would reference 26602, which is just, it's entitled trustees' power over property. And it's the trustees of any district have the power and the responsibility to hold in trust all real and personal property of the district for the benefit of the schools and children of the district. So that's your guiding principle. It's for the benefit of the schools and the children of the district. So there's not any specific requirement for market value, highest and best use. It's really a case-by-case determination based upon that guiding principle of for the benefit of the schools and the children in the district.
I, what properties are we talking about, number one? And two, have we figured out how the school came to own those properties? Because I know that was a question on some of the properties, were they gifted to us, et cetera? So I guess you mentioned our top three. Could you tell us what they are?
I would just say that at this point in time, what we'd like to do is put together a whole proposal for the board and talk to you about each parcel. We do have some property that is located way up at the top of essentially the Mansion Heights area. It's largely surrounded by open space. We refer to it by a variety of names, but 55th Street or Heaven's Gate. We also own some property that is basically isolated on the backside of Maryland Park. And we reviewed that site when we were contemplating construction of a new Cold Spring School. And then we have the Home Vale property across the street.
Questions for Pat or superintendent thing? See, none. This is, as we mentioned, information only at this point because, I mean, it's just to let us know that there are two different mechanisms by which the district can consider selling property, whether it's real or physical. And so at a later point, it sounds like we're going to be asked as trustees to take a look at a package of property. And I don't know when that would be. Do you have a question? Sure.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was trying to think if I'd gotten an answer to my second question because I kind of tried to sneak two in before. And the, the second one was whether, so as Megan just pointed out, we have an obligation to hold and trust that property for the use, the, the best benefit to students and so on. Does that include any sort of responsibility for how we dispose of it in terms, or does that responsibility simply terminate if we sell it? You know, and somebody wants to build a tannery or something? I mean, is it like a, do, do we have a, a responsibility to think about what's going to happen on that property after we sell it?
Statutorily, Pat and I have gone through all the provisions that really apply. There's the general power over property. And then there's the two mechanisms in the statute to sell or dispose of the property. Aside from that, the only other thing I'd add on the resolutions is it, it just requires you to specify what you're going to do with the proceeds, if there are any. There are no other explicit restrictions. Again, it's not going to guarantee that someone can't come up with some. That certainly happened in the lawsuit regarding the Roosevelt sale. But as Pat mentioned, we prevailed on that issues or on that lawsuit. So those are basically the parameters that you're bound by.
I would identify that none of those properties currently generate any revenue for the school district. And so if we talk about the benefit for the students, I think my earlier statement that we could utilize that money through the building fund, et cetera, in order to support facilities for students is an important consideration. So we'll again come back with some advice and suggestions for the board at a later date.
I'm sorry, have someone already addressed this and I missed it? But are any of these properties zoned?
You know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's, what's recorded against them and how they're zoned. Probably the Maryland Park one was most recently looked at, but I, I still don't know what, how they're zoned.
Any other questions? I'm thinking that when there's an actual proposal for us to consider both the fact, whether there's any zoning restrictions would be on the information we would receive and also with Diane's question, how did we come, how did the district come to have this property? If it was donated by someone just because they wanted to and it was never really anticipated that a school could ever even be built, that it was just someone's will that said, we ended up with a funny piece of property? So I'm sure we'll get those specifics when there's ever a recommendation to actually take action on any property. Does that seem fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Then thank you for reminding me to not skip over five. And now we do come to six and I'll start again. Would it be okay to discuss A, B, and C as a whole, where the only one where there'd be any action taken tonight would be on A, which would for elementary trustees to approve the form of the ballot language with certification of the final ballot language at the March 28th board meeting? But B and C have to do with two other things that we would be actually formalizing at the March 28th meeting. So is it okay to talk about all three together and take action on one? Okay.
All right. So the, the, as Marcia mentioned, the item A with respect to the elementary is, is a request to approve the form of the ballot. And this is for the trustee seats. There are two open for three-year term. And, and so this is the form of the ballot that we would finalize at the end of March. And the reason we ask for approval of the form of it, even though it contains no names, is just we can share, we can share this with the county elections office and they can start formulating what the, what the final ballot might look like. And it also gives you an opportunity to take a look at what the ballot would look like, make any recommendations or offer any suggestions, that type of thing. Should I go to the high school or the, the next item? So the items B and C, these, these are repeated on the, on the high school side. B is the resolution authorizing cancellation of the election and declaration of the election by acclamation. What this means is it's a resolution whereby the board of trustees authorizes the superintendent or his designee and the board chair to cancel the election and declare the election by acclamation if the number of candidates is equal or less than the number of open seats. And we put in place this resolution because we won't know until right, you know, at the tail end. This year, it's, it's, it's actually kind of great to have this second board meeting because we're, we're right there on the 28th. So in years past, we would have that resolution in place on the second board, second Tuesday of the month, and then it would stay intact while we wait and see if there are write-in candidates or any subsequent candidates. So, you know, less critical this year, but still, still a useful resolution to have in place. Item C is the general fund levy ballot language, and that's on page 23 for the elementary. And, and here, this is, this is what the, the ballot would look like. And if, if we inserted the, the present maximum levy amount, over-based levy of $804,000, then the number of mills would be about 7.35. And that equates to about $9.93 on a $100,000 home and about $19.85 double on a $200,000 assessed taxable property home. And I, I did not put numbers in there, but it's, it's always interesting to look at what that might look like, only because we just don't know. But I, I really would see that we would recommend the, in the elementary, the, the maximum amount to get to the max budget. Just, we haven't asked for an operating levy in the elementary now and, and for last couple of years. And as you can see from the budget projections, it would be necessary for the maintenance of the operations. So that's what that would look like on the elementary side. Should I jump to the high school? Okay.
And so any questions for Pat? Generally, on the elementary side of these things, at some point, we will have to consider to get the ballots finalized and final form. Any questions? See, none. Then I would entertain a motion that we approve the form of the ballot and the certification of final ballot language at the March 28th meeting as to the elementary school trustee election, which the form is on page 21 and this is elementary only. So is there a motion? Move by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Move by trustee Edgerton, trustee Verrett. Any further discussion? See, none. Any public comment? And then all elementary trustees in favor of approving the form of the ballot language on page 21, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all trustees present. And then we move on to item seven, which is the high school election. This is the mirror of the elementary election. So I don't know if there's any need for Pat to meet that, but he has said. to me that's been discussed. And so, um, oh, thank you, sorry. And so is there a motion to, it's actually written, oh, there we are. Is there a motion to approve the form of the ballot language with certification of the final ballot language at the March 28th board meeting, which ballot language is found on page 24 of the attachments to the agenda? Is there a motion by any trustee? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Bragstad. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of approving the form of the ballot language with certification, with the understanding that the final ballot language will be certified at the March 28th board meeting. All those in favor? That's all trustees present. And as we indicated, the, B and C are information items which are, other than the fact they apply to high schools, are the same information patches went through. So now we move to B, which is personnel negotiations and policy, and the first topic is to approve the early learning program 2017-2018 calendar. It's an elementary action item, and so Dave, it looks like you're going to point us out anything of significance on?
There really isn't. Some of our programs have different operating calendars than our general calendars, and the Early Learning Center is one of those. So it pretty much mirrors the general calendars we have, both for elementary and high school. It just has a little bit later start date and a little bit earlier end date than the general calendars that we have. Otherwise, it matches and mirrors what we have for the district as a whole.
Thanks. Any questions for Dave?
I was just wondering, is there any reason we're doing this now instead of with the other calendars? Is it just that they didn't have it ready?
We, when they evaluate the programs, sometimes each of the individual departments, we let them look at the calendars, and they make them based off of what we've done as the general. So for like both the elementary and the high school, we're actually meeting now for the calendars for the 18, 19 school year. So we'll put those together, and the smaller programs off, and then modify theirs to match what we've done.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion by an elementary trustee to approve the 2017-2018 calendar as it is set out on page 23 of the attachment into our agenda? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Decker. Is there something I should know about?
No, I just shut off the microphone.
I was shaking my water bottle.
Oh, okay. Okay. So with that distraction, so we have a motion and a second, right, Elizabeth? Okay. Any comments? Board discussion? Any public comment? And so all elementary trustees in favor of approving the early learning program 2017-2018 calendar that is attached to our agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to B two, which, just for clarification's sake, when we set board policy, there are often procedures that are generated by the administration to support our board policy, but they usually get into much more detail than policy necessarily would be. So this is an area where there has been an acceleration procedure, as, policy is a procedure, I guess I should say. And so these are the procedures that line up with other policies, and so we've asked Karen to explain them to the trustees, but understand, we don't approve these procedures. They're administratively handled, but because we've had a discussion and some parent involvement, we've asked Karen to give us an update.
Thank you. I am not feeling they need any extensive discussion. It's at your discretion. I would say that these procedures, because they're really important, have been vetted by several groups, including the superintendent's cabinet, and also through the points group, which is the parents' group. And so we did get feedback, and we did incorporate the feedback into the actual procedures. Also, sometimes there is a question about how would we know that these procedures are actually going to get implemented? And in the near future, on the calendar for our principals' leadership workshop, is a focus on these procedures and some actually program implementation suggestions from OPI. So we will have some work with our principals specifically on these acceleration procedures.
I apologize, I haven't read this entirely, but I'm wondering, we have all these procedures to accelerate a student, do we have a, any sort of feedback mechanism here to, to take a holistic look at that student's mental health and whether they're under too much pressure, whether they're becoming isolated by most of these procedures?
Well, first of all, I think the procedures are a wide variety of opportunities. You wouldn't do all of them with anybody, so I think that would be number one. But number two, in this process, is an individualized plan that's developed for each student and that is evaluated each year, that includes the student, the parent, the teachers, the, the administration of the school, and that, as I said, is, is updated every year and goes with them until they graduate. So your questions are totally appropriate, and that would be a time that that would be discussed.
Would, Karen, would that individualized plan be something that every student identified by testing would have sort of set in motion, or would it take an advocate? Whether that be a teacher or a parent to kind of put that process in motion? Is this something that is just going to be a sort of typical part of the experience for a child who's been so identified?
Yes. It becomes, after the assessment that identifies the student as having learning characteristics that need accommodations of these kinds, then that is an automatic. And it's a school-based automatic. Historically, people have relied on the Gifted Ed Coordinator, but this, we will move toward this being a building-based process.
I have a couple of questions. I know on, sorry, thanks. I have a couple of questions. I know that on the, in the, in the guidelines here, the, I think it's where we're talking about identifying, we mentioned that the readiness will be evaluated using the Iowa Acceleration Scale Guide for a whole grade acceleration. Is, and I don't know that specifically, but I, I just know it peripherally. Is that the right guide for a single subject and, and content-based? Because I, my understanding is that is basically addressing skipping a grade.
That's what its purpose is, but it can, it can help with the others, but the, but the content-based acceleration would be more around how the student is actually performing in the content, classroom-based.
Okay. And then I, I know that, and the way that I'm reading the procedures is, is, and the way that it ties into policies, that identified kids will, I forget what the words is, may or shall, or will, you know, be, be, we're going to give them challenging material and, and address their, their needs. I, I noticed that we have multi-age classrooms as, as an, as an option for meeting those needs. And my understanding, we've had these multi-age classrooms in some of our schools for many years. I, I don't really see that as a, as a, a different, I mean, there can be kids in these multi-age classrooms that aren't, aren't getting any special.
Of course, yes. They're not specific. I think the other thing that's really important is you don't have to be identified as a, as a gifted student to have acceleration as an opportunity. So we want to be sure that we're meeting the needs of all students, whether they've been identified as gifted or not. So that's why this is cross-referenced to instruction as well as Gifted Ed.
Great. And, and a lot of these, like the content-based stuff, and maybe the single, single subject stuff, I, I didn't see much mention of differentiation within the classroom. I hope that we are planning on using that. I know we have some teachers that are really adept at that and love to expand that.
And should, this is only when a student needs something beyond that. That should be going on every day. But if a student, if that, if a student needs more than that, then that's where this kicks in.
Okay, cool.
We talk about core instruction, and core instruction should have differentiation in it.
Right. I hope it goes. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Ken?
I, I am not seeing college classes in here. Is, is that covered in dual enrollment?
Yes.
The student takes a course at one level and receives credit at a higher level, but that doesn't mention?
The other way.
Okay.
Any other questions? Another question?
The only other question I had is, when we brought out those policies, and these are ones that we've, we've, I know we just did the 2166, I think this is maybe a typo. I, I read the bullet, the second bullet twice. Is there a reason that's in italics as on page 32?
I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't, I'm Mike.
Page 32, the second bullet is repeated in italics right below it. Why is that? I'm not sure I understand what that means.
Megan, should that have been taken out?
I cannot recall because I, I don't remember what the redlined version said. We'll have to go back and look.
So it's probably just, that's what I would assume it was, just a typo.
We'll check. It's just, since we're not considering at this point, we'll get the answer to why it looks so weird. Because it does look weird.
That, and, I'll, I'll leave the other one first.
Thanks. Karen, one more quick question. In terms of the Iowa Acceleration Scale, is there guidance or even requirements somewhere that require that, how students are identified to be tested with that tool? All students at certain ages take the COGAT, if I'm not mistaken, but does that then trigger testing with the Iowa scale? Like, how does that process work? Or does someone, again, need to advocate for that to happen?
It, a student needs, who needs acceleration beyond classroom acceleration may be referred. And so that indicates the teacher may refer, the parents may refer, the student may refer themselves. A friend of the family could refer, possibly, by going through the appropriate channels. So it, again, is indicated by the student needs something beyond what is being provided in the classroom. If you look on page 28, under implementation guidelines.
I guess the reason why I bring it up is that it's my understanding that around the country, disadvantaged students are identified at far lower rates than students who have parents who strongly advocate for them, et cetera. And so it's just an equity question.
I think your point about COGAT is well-taken because that causes us to identify students that we need to be focusing on as early as second grade. So we are doing that, all, all over.
And I would just identify that again, as Mrs. Allen referenced earlier, there would be annual reviews of the student's program, and that team would likely be the place where this conversation would surface. Are the needs of the student being met? How would we need to plan further for that student? And conversations about potential acceleration would occur at that point in time.
Last one, I promise. And this is on our policy 2000 for instruction. At the very, very bottom, the last paragraph reads that the, "The board of trustees shall annually review and revise the district vision, mission, student expectations, and they shall annually develop strategic goals that will guide the staff in development and implementation." Is that they, you might understand that that day is board of trustees? Sorry, Megan. And, and this just might be something that we, we want to change at a future date. I, I want to make sure I'm reading this right, because I don't think we do this, or I, I see it as beyond our scope. Last.
We can look into that, or have Mark? So we need to pull that policy, either of the two policies and bring them back to?
Right. Well, I just want to make sure I'm reading it right so that I understand in the context it is.
Yeah, two good questions. Thank you so much. So anything else on this topic about the procedures? Okay. Seeing none, then we're on to item number, oh, public comment? Oh, sure. And this is information only, but we do take public comment on information items only. And I think the reason trustee Smith is reading public comment is the person who couldn't, who wanted to comment couldn't be here, and she forwarded to him her comments. So he's actually reading them from someone else who's?
I am, I'm reading comments for Julie Merritt, who is a member of points that Karen mentioned was helpful in putting this stuff together. And so I'll just read her comment here. From Julie Merritt, a member in points, "Please note that this is a personal statement. It does not represent a position of the points organization. First of all, I want to thank Karen Allen and Shirley Lindberg for their hard work in these procedures. Karen very graciously gave the members of points leadership team the opportunity to review and comment on an initial draft of the acceleration procedures that are in front of the board this evening, and I am grateful to have had that opportunity. It is very satisfying as a parent and a citizen to feel included in the process and to be part of the conversation. I feel like the acceleration procedures as drafted do a great job of, of lining out the myriad options that are available to schools and teachers related to the acceleration. I hope that simply articulating all these options in this manner will increase awareness among teachers and administration, and that this will result in meeting the needs of a higher percentage of gifted students in our district. Beyond that, I have a couple of comments and questions that I would like to leave with the board today. In the first paragraph, under the heading, "Implementation Guidelines for Acceleration Procedures," it states that a student, quote, "may be referred for acceleration consideration by a teacher or other staff member, a parent, or they may advocate for themselves," end quote. My question is, to whom should that referral be addressed? Should that referral be made to the school principal, the Gifted Ed coordinator, the classroom teacher? Who? I wonder if it would be useful to specify that part, in part of the, that part of the process in this procedure document. My own experience was with an attempt to have my son admitted early into kindergarten was quite frustrating, as such details were not spelled out. A parent who had no prior experience with the world, in the world of public education, I feel like I was just left to chase my own tail. In a similar vein, I am wondering about the requirement in the very first paragraph that states, "When a student qualifies for one of three forms of acceleration outlined below, grade level or content teams in conjunction with the student and family will draft," end quote. "I completely appreciate and support the designation of team members and the direction to draft a plan. However, I wonder if the school administrator, such as the principal or vice principal, should be identified as having the ultimate responsibility for ensuring these plans are one, developed, and two, implemented to the best of the school's ability. I may be guilty of being a pessimist, but I am concerned that if responsibilities are not clearly defined, then there is the risk that the ball will get dropped. I don't intend to cast aspersions, but I believe it is human nature, especially when we are all so busy and working so hard, to believe that someone else is, quote, taking care of it. Clearly defined roles and responsibilities would prevent many potential misunderstandings and provide a better guide for parents, students, teachers, and administrators to follow. Thanks again. I am very excited to see these procedures introduced to the board, and I look forward to the ongoing conversation." Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment on this information item? Okay, seeing none. Then we move on to number 10, which is public comment. We preserve opportunities both at the beginning and end of each board meeting to have public comment regarding non-agenda items. And so it really isn't the end, end of the meeting because we're going to go into executive session to consider some minutes, and then we're actually going to come out of executive session because to act upon approving the minutes, we have to do that in a public meeting that's going to be very brief. So this is the opportunity for public comment, the second opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none, then I will declare that the right to privacy outweighs the public's interest to know this, and really, this is just a new statutory obligation that we've got. The legislature two sessions ago now required that school boards keep minutes of executive session, executive session components of each board meeting. And so And so as a result, we have to approve those minutes, but we can't talk about them as to what the minutes say until we break into executive session. So this is brand, it's fairly new process that was created by legislative action, I think, two sessions ago. One session ago? Last session? So that, this is a new process that we haven't had to use in the past, and that's why we're doing it now, to make sure we comply with this newly enacted law. So we'll break into, or go into executive session, so everyone else is, you know, we thank you for being at the meeting, and we'll let everyone else go. I don't know if, Megan, if you even need to stay?